Okay, folks, this is a limited technology. We can do the best we can tonight with this. I'm sorry, but there's a failure somewhere in the system. We just don't have time tonight to fix it. First time we've had one all year. Fair play, please, Roz. Councilman Rice will lead us in invocation. Now, I'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity once again to come together and handle the business of the city. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom and that you would give us guidance as we seek to operate in your grace and mercy. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please show me a pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a seat. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We appreciate it. I know a lot of you are not citizens of Centerville, but you are neighbors. And we love you as much as we love our own citizens. So, thank you for being here with us. First item we have here, I believe we need a recommendation to remove the executive session.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove the executive session from the agenda.
Have a motion in a second. No further discussion. Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, item seven is removed, and item eight now becomes, is also removed with it. Okay. First item we have is on the public comments, and this has nothing to do with rezoning or anything. This is a separate thing. People come in and can just talk with us about things. The first item here is a discussion of the East SLOST. This can be done by Jay Flesher, Citizens Committee Chairperson. Jay, if you'd come up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you, guys, for hosting me this evening. This is really a PSA on behalf of the school system, but also on behalf of the Citizens Committee for Public Education. So, if you guys realize that each and every year, each and every couple of years, we have, East SLOST comes up, and this is, currently, there's going to be a vote in March that is associated with the 2022 East SLOST. So, what's interesting about the school system and the way they are able to produce information and share it with the, with the community, is they are not able to ask for people to vote yes for that, that particular program. So, what happens is, we stand, stand up a committee, and that committee is able to go around and raise funds and put up signage and, and create information associated with that. Next slide. Okay, so, keep going. So, there has been a committee stood up, and the committee that we've stood up is myself. My name is Jay Flesher. My wife Cindy Flesher, who is a retired educator. And then, we also have Rick Franklin, who's the treasurer of, of this committee. And part of that is, we gather information from the school system, and then we provide it back to the community as, as a whole. And then, we also develop the program that allows the, the community to either invest in helping promote the East SLOST, or, or just to say yes. So, the current East SLOST is, again, for 2022 through 2027. This is not increase in tax. This will actually take the place of the current East SLOST that is in place. And so, this past East SLOST, they focused basically on the same criteria, which is safety and security, facilities, technology and transportation. Basically, what you've seen over the past five years of this East SLOST, they have, they have fulfilled all the promises made and all the facilities to be put in place, including the technology and transportation. So, in reality, why would you want to vote yes? In this situation, the, the trust of, of the results that have been put in place, Houston County is one of the leading education organizations in the state of Georgia, and they continue to put facilities in place, both throughout the whole community, not just in, in one part or another, but as a whole community. And they've shown that primarily by doing the competition gyms and some of the other facilities, educational facilities, and, and other things like that. So, anyway, with that being said, the things that we really want to look at is, again, this is not a new tax. This is an existing tax. This also allows, by passing the East SLOST, it allows the school system to plan. It takes multiple years to plan in advance of, for the, the new program. And then, also, our school system is, is truly an economic driver, and it continues to promote that in their community. So, sort of in wrapping this up, so, February 22nd through March 12th is early voting, and you can, should have already registered. If you're already registered, you can do that. And early voting can be taken in three different places. Is at the Board of Elections in Perry, the Houston Health Pavilion here in One Robbins, or the Central Georgia Technical College, Sunny Watson Health Center Building out on the campus at Central Georgia Tech. So, if you are interested in helping and supporting, there are multiple ways of doing that, is obviously being an informed advocate of our program and what the East SLOST has done in the past. You know, you can actually donate money in support of the committee and their efforts. We will have marketing campaigns, both inside and in social media sites. You can either request a presentation, which would be much better than this one, because we, we have shortened all this down to, to try to take the limited amount of time. But if you request a presentation to be made, either to a church, or to a civic group, or to some other group, we will come and actually do that for you, or give you the presentation to do, and then assisting in social media, that if, if you have that ability. Again, down at the very bottom, you will see that there's a website. Are we on the last page yet? Go to the last page for me one more time. So, in just final wrap-up, you'll see that there's a website. I left out a tremendous amount of slides that we use in our normal presentation, and I apologize for the herky-jerky-ness of my presentation, but I can tell you that if you go to the Houston County slash splot.com, you will see all the information that the school system is providing, and we're providing as citizens, and you'll actually have the ability to plug into that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I rest, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Mayor and council is neither supporting nor recommending, or against nothing whatsoever. We're just advising everybody and request that you think about it and go out and vote, vote whatever your conscience is. We're not taking any decision on it. Okay, item number, item number one is done. There's no bit, no old business tonight on the new business. First item is a home-based business, Vaidex Design Salon and Days Spa LLC. Owner, Vinnie D. Sampson, 254 Ridge Bend Drive. Councilman Evans and City Clerk Benfield, you held this, please.
Yes, sir. She is going to be opening a hair salon, basically, she's going to be doing individuals here. I don't, I don't think I'm going to need that service, but it's great to have people who are enterprising and want to do business that are sick. So, I suspect that she will be having folks come in on appointment, so, but there, there will probably be minimal traffic that's coming to her residence, but from the information that I've been given, she has followed all the proper procedures, and, and so I recommend that we go ahead and approve, or actually, I move that we approve this new business.
Have a motion in a second. I understand here she's going hair salon that uses very minimal chemicals, focused on natural, healthy hair. Wow, okay. Anybody have any further comments? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Passes. We have a new business partner in the city of Centerville. Welcome to the city of Centerville. I don't know if Ms. Sampson's here or not, but welcome.
I'm going to let her in first thing in the morning.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number three is an appointment of Centerville's pro temp municipal judge, Sherry Herrera Campbell. Councilman Evans and City Attorney Tidings, who is not, not listed.
Yes, sir. I'll take that, thank you. So, I do have a note from the city attorney that I'll read. So, we're appointing Mrs. Campbell to be the mayor of pro temp. Sherry Herrera Campbell. And she has almost thirty years of experience practicing law, including municipal court experience. Formerly served as Centerville's courts Spanish translator, and currently serves as one of the City of One Robbins Municipal Court Judges, in addition to having her own local law practice. She's familiar with municipal court procedures, and specifically Centerville Court and Personnel Manual and Procedures. She has reputation for honesty, integrity and competency, and they are unquestioned among her colleagues and peers, including our city attorneys. Ms. Campbell, our attorney spoke with Ms. Campbell, and she's more than willing to serve. She'll be available to sit in for municipal court trials on, on February 19th. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I move that we follow our city attorney's recommendation and appoint Ms. Campbell as the pro temp.
Okay, motion in a second. If she passes tonight, I will go down there Friday morning before court and swear her in as a, a new pro temp municipal judge. Okay, any further comments or questions? She has served the court before in, in different roles, one of which is as an interpreter, and she's done an outstanding job in there, and I understand where she's at. She's done an outstanding job too, so. Okay, I called the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, I'll be very happy to go and swear her in, become our new pro temp municipal judge. Item number four is approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget preparation calendar and appointment of budget subcommittee. Councilman Evans, please.
Yes, sir. It is that time once again, Mr. Mayor, that we have to begin preparations for our annual budget. Our fiscal year begins on July 1st. So, tonight, we're here to look at the, the calendar and to appoint a committee to, to serve for that purpose. City Attorney, City, County Harrison, do you have something to add?
No, sir. I think you said it. Really, the calendar just outlines some dates and the process. A few key dates are highlighted there. You know, in March, of course, the department heads will meet with myself. In April, they will meet with the Budget Subcommittee. On May 4th, the budget would be presented to the full mayor and council. On the 1st of June, we'll have a public hearing, and then on June 15th, we would adopt the budget. So, as you said, we're just looking for approval of the calendar and an appointment of the Budget Subcommittee.
Okay, at this point, then, I guess entertain them. Well, let's, let's decide on who's going to do it. Councilman Rice, I understand you want to be on the committee?
Yes, sir. I took a year off last year, and I'd like to be back on that committee. I think it was, I think it was you two last year.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was on, no, not last year. I was on, I was with you two years ago.
Yeah, okay. No, it was you two last year.
I was on it last year.
No, that's right, it was the mayor, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Not that many options left, so I guess I had to be, yeah, I'd be glad to serve on that committee, you know.
Okay, but I'll serve only if somebody else wants to serve.
I volunteered to serve, ma'am.
Okay, we have two volunteers. Okay, entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the budget calendar and the appointment of the committee for, for the process.
All right. Yes, Councilman Omeo on the committee, and Councilman Rice on the committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hope you have a second. I heard a second out there. All right, any further discussions? Got some fine people who have an interesting budget this year, guys.
Yes.
All right. Call for a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, passes. We now have a budget calendar and a budget committee, or subcommittee. Thank you very much. Item number four, here is, we're going to discuss the potential for rezoning, and Councilman, oh, I say Director of Operations Bronfield, do you have anything you want to say beforehand?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would just tell you that on, the past Thursday night, planning zoning board did meet on the proposed rezoning and annexation we received from Mr. Dylan Wingate on the property located in front of Dunbar Road and Houston Lake. Mr. Wingate's proposal is to rezone from Houston County R1 to Centerville R2. In that meeting, we did have several residents that, that attended and voiced their opinions and concerns about the rezoning. I think most of those are present here tonight. I did speak to them before the meeting and told them that if they would maybe have a single spokesperson for the, for the group, that would be great, but if anybody felt like they needed to really say something, that was fine. Also, overall, most who spoke stated that they aren't against the development outright, but that they are concerned about density, traffic flow and safety in that area. No one was opposed to the annexation. Also present at that meeting was Mr. Rodney Harold, traffic engineer with Houston County, stated that Houston County will require a traffic study on Dunbar Road and that the Georgia DOT will require the same on Highway 41 in order to determine what traffic coming and control measures will be mandated. So, the board did recommend approval of the rezoning with some, with some stipulations. What the board would like to see is the boundary line between the county R1 and Centerville R2 be rezoned as R1, rezoned as R2, but meet the requirements of R1, which would require larger lots. So, it would be a phased in, you know, from the outside, you know, the tiny lots like you would normally, where it would be larger lots on the outside, and then they, they would, from all areas, you went inside the development. And that was the recommendation for, for the P and Z.
Okay, has the, has Mr. Dylan expressed the fact that he would change that to R1?
Yes, sir. He's already supplied the county with an updated property plan.
Shows R1 alone, the entire permit, we have some discussion, okay. I'm asking a lot of these questions to get it out, because neither myself nor any of the council members attended the P and Z meeting, because we're forbidden from attending that. We have to listen to what they have to say. Then, we go into public session here in a few minutes. I'll just explain that to everybody. Does anything else you wish to add to that?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Now, I'm about to go to a public, to a public hearing. When I do, I ask if you, if you will come up and say something, if it's something somebody else has already said, you know, just to stop not to come up, because we, we know that you, whatever you hear.
I think in, in the interest of, of keeping this, this meeting as distant as possible, since the podium is up here, it's going to be difficult for somebody to come to. I, I think if somebody, if it was their, if your turn to speak, if you just stand where you're seated.
That's correct.
We don't have any problem hearing you from out there, so.
Yeah, I, I, in the lobby before the meeting, we stand in place, state their name, their address for the record, and, and speak from their chair.
Mayor, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
On, on the, what's in our packet, the highlighted part, is going to be R1?
That's correct.
So, that's been corrected at the county?
Yes, sir.
And I was going to further say, try to limit to about three minutes. You can see by the number of people here, this can get very long if we're not careful. But we normally require, I'll tell everybody who does public comments, three minute maximum, unless you have some reason beforehand, we'll snuff.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the director, if I could.
Go ahead.
So, director, looking at this, this plaque here, and I see where the R1 is going to be. I, I don't recall, what is?
The R1 is already existing. That's what Houston County.
What, what is this? What is this?
That's, that's the open field that is already zoned, R1 in the county.
Okay, so, so that's an open field?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are no other homes adjacent there. In the back area over here, toward Houston Lake, there's a retention, retention upon, I believe, and there's some houses on the other side of it, the streethouses on the other side of that.
Yes, sir.
That's correct? Okay. Good observation. Okay, at this point, I'm on, I'm on entering the public hearing, and if anybody wishes to say something, please stand and give us your name. Okay, we have one gentleman here. Yes, sir?
Okay, I'll do my best to make this in three minutes or less.
All right.
My name's Mike Tensaw. I reside at 301 Mary Sue Lane. I live in the Dunbar community. Dunbar community, for those of you who don't know, is an area of, basically in a mile radius of intersection of Dunbar and Houston Lake Road. I was at the meeting last Thursday. A lot of people focused different issues concerning crime, density, traffic. By far, the area that was the most impactful and most concerning was the traffic. Before I get into that, let me quickly acknowledge Houston County Chairman or Commissioner Sonaker, Walker and Robinson, through their efforts, this has brought to the attention of the Dunbar community, so we're able to have some input on this. We appreciate that, so it's not rubber-staffed through committees. The Dunbar community consists of anywhere between first generation all the way up to seventh generation landowners out there. Our problem is not, not in our backyard issue. As I said earlier, we understand growth, we accept growth, we just want it done reasonably. Living in the Dunbar community, we've been squeezed over the years between Centerville and north of Centerville on traffic. The, what used to be the, and still is, the danger zone of the intersection of Highway 41, 49 and 11. There is where Houston Lake Road comes to an end, and you have to cross your fingers and pray if you want to go to Byron. Thus it is acting. And now with the subdivision that has recently come into place, and Houston Lake Road was an old zone or something like that, where their density and some of the type, the traffic is more redness. Up until recently, there was a one-entry subdivision. We're all still scratching our heads as to how the entrance came into play over Highway 41. I don't know who owns that little strip of pavement. I don't think, I've, I've heard it's legal, but very illicit, is the way it came into play. But our concern is that as this subdivision goes forward, we ask that proper acceleration zones, or acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, turn lanes, all are taken into consideration with that. As he had mentioned a minute ago, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware, I also want to give thanks to Mr. Wingate for going to committee with the Centerville and proactively asking that some of the addresses, the issues be addressed for the rezoning. Our main concern is presently, as the subdivision that he will be adjoined to, if you drive through that subdivision, it's like an obstacle course. The lots are so tight, there's not enough cars, excuse me, too many cars to park in the driveways. You have to constantly weave in and out going through the subdivision. That's why we specifically ask, particularly at the entrance to each of 41 and Dunbar, for the lots to be bigger, to allow people parking in yards instead of out on the road. Mr. Wingate had also mentioned that there would be a restricted covenant, there would be a little bit of homeowners association that would prohibit people from parking in the street. We hope that is the case, and it's here to. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chuck Fenske. I live at the corner of Dunbar and 41. I have five acres there. I have two concerns. The first is the noise. My house sits 400 feet off of 41. I'm way in the back of my property. The truck noise, the motorcycle noise, and the vehicle noise, we can hear it in the house, and we're 400 feet away. The 18-wheelers, in some cases, brake stop, if you know what that is.
I do.
It, we can, the house almost rattles it so much. The motorcycles, and I'm not talking about the Harley-Davidsons, I'm talking about the Japanese and the, the smaller bikes, they will go down 41, first of all, it's a, it's a speed, it's a drag strip. But the noise, we can hear the motorcycles, we can hear the trucks. Now, as I understand it, there will be something like 300 homes in this subdivision. Well, that's 300 more cars, but many people have two cars. So, I'm going to say it's between 300 and 600 more vehicles that I'm going to have to listen to, because people come off of Dunbar onto 41. So, the noise alone is irritating already, it's going to just increase so much more with adding 300 to 600 cars. I'm also concerned about the safety. Dunbar Road between 41 and Houston Lake is a drag strip. People will turn off of 41 onto Dunbar. The motorcycle guys love to do the wheelies. The guys in their fast cars, we can hear them in the house. The tires screeching, there's never police there, and I'm not, I'm not knocking the police. I'm saying, it's a, it's a drag strip. They go as fast as they can and then start to slow down when they get to Houston Lake. The same thing on 41. They'll come off Dunbar and turn to go north on 41, and the minute they're on 41, we can hear those tires screech, and if a policeman was there with a radar gun, he'd have a field day. I have a black fence across the front of my entire property. Two or three times a year, somebody coming down Dunbar doesn't stop, and they go through my fence. The one, few months ago, that cost me $900 just to repair. It happens usually two or three times a year. Someone's going to get really seriously hurt from the traffic coming down Dunbar. They're either, I'm sorry, drunk, or on drugs, or not paying attention, or texting, and they run the stop sign and come right into my yard, bust into my fence, throwing up my lawn and whatever else. So, I have those two concerns, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Clear up a little bit what he was saying, that area on Dunbar between Houston Lake and 41 is Houston County. It's not city. So, we can't put any police on that. And going down 41, when you get into Dunbar, on 41 to the left, you go down about half a mile before you get into Centerville.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's, that's all, again, that's Houston County right in there. And I'm not trying to put the finger on them, but they have a small area, Houston County still does over there, and I know it's difficult for them to keep an officer or sheriff's deputy over that direction. They do the great job over there.
Mayor, I also wonder, we're listening to his comments there. I know that area is in the county, but I do know that there are some areas, and you see them all over, which are where, in certain areas, you'll see signs posted that say no jake bricks in this area.
Right.
I don't know if that's something that we could either, I don't believe that area is in the city limits of Centerville, so I don't believe we could.
Well, Highway, Highway 41, too, is a state, state highway, and it's not, all the speed limits on it, all governed by the state. In other words, none of the county or the cities have no say in what, what the state puts on that.
I think we might could at least make an inquiry as to whether or not, that's something that could be posted there. That, to me, that wouldn't affect the speed limit, they would just have to be, have to change the way that they were driving, that using either their hydro brakes and not the...
Again, that's... I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I hate that.
I'm really concerned about the people that feel they need to use it as a drag strip.
Exactly.
On Dunbar itself, and there's entrances to the subdivision that are going to be off Dunbar, which I'm sure there are, boy, I don't know that I'd want to live in that subdivision.
Well, I'd also be curious, and maybe Chief Jones or Lieutenant Salz could speak to this, but I, I wonder if, if a high percentage of those people don't live anywhere near this area, they just know that's a good place to come and, and, and drive fast, and it's a long straight piece, and so.
I think that's a great...
It may not be all related to the residents in there.
I'm outside all the time, okay? I see some of the same cars and the same motorcycles with the same helmet do this all the time. And I think some of them, it's 55 miles an hour in front of my home. I think some of those people are going 85 by the time they come down 41, or they turn onto Dunbar, and then race down towards Houston Lake. So, I'm concerned about the safety of everyone, but my family and myself, especially when they break through my fence, my fence, I'm not really concerned. um, that really concerns me. The, I understand, Mr. Mayor, what you're saying about, uh, the, the city of Centerville and everything else, I'm.
I, I wish we did have that capability to go in there and do it. Um, I, I do know that Highway forty-one there is, is some plans in the future, whenever you get the money, is what they always tell us. They're gonna expand it and make it as wide as it is down on the southern end over there.
Yes, and they just finished, uh, doing the, the left turn lane right in front of my home.
Yeah.
Uh, they did that in twenty nineteen, I believe.
They're gonna widen the highway, too, make it five lanes, you know, so eventually they plan.
The traffic is unbelievable on forty-one.
It is. It's a, it's a good, it, it's almost as bad as Church Street out here. We get people doing sixty-five miles an hour down there as Church Street, 'cause it's a good, it's a nice, they don't have to go on House, uh, go into, uh, Watson Boulevard. They pull in here and go down to Central Oaks, and so I know where you're coming from. I appreciate that concern.
Besides myself and my family, anyone.
You're.
So it's a dangerous intersection that I live on, but, you know.
We lose, the stop sign over here, we lose it about four times a year, somebody takes it out going so fast.
Four?
It is.
About seven.
Four times a week.
Exactly.
Twice a week already, are you kidding?
Well, the, the, my fence, the last time, of course, they took down all the highway signs, that, they crashed right through it, and, uh, whoever came out, uh, Houston County was really quick and they fixed it terrifically. But, uh, someone's gonna go through one of those steel signs and they're gonna be.
Houston County, I'm sure that was them, 'cause they, they do a wonderful job in Houston County, the commissioners up there.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely wonderful job, trying to do everything they can in the county. The county is big.
Yes, sir.
You know, Centerville's in Houston County.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Stonker likes to remind us.
Thank you.
We are, thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything they wish to say? Any thing is different? I can't see somebody?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir?
Mayor, House, thank you for giving the opportunity. My name is Brad Warby. I live at twelve oh six Dunbar Road, kinda right by the corner of Houston Lake and Dunbar. Um, I'm the city resident, the Senator, so thank you for giving us this time. Um, I wasn't able to make it. Actually, I didn't even know about last Thursday session due to COVID and just not driving past the sign. Um, so I learned this through, uh, Jay Walker and came here tonight. So thank you, first of all, for letting us do this in the COVID. Um, second of all, I think I talked to maybe Miss Bunnfield today, earlier today, I can't remember who I talked to on the phone, but they were absolutely amazing, trying to get me up to speed. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm the opponent as to the notes from last Thursday meeting. Um, so again, thank you for that. Um, I have the same concerns about traffic and stuff. My, I guess my question is, I don't, I haven't seen any maps or anything as far as entrances, exits. If there's anything as far as lot size or planned minimum home size or anything like that? I know with the traffic studies, uh, forty-one being a state house, it would be nice if they put stop and stoplight, traffic signal at forty-one and Dunbar, but I know that's up to the state, um, to do. Um, so I guess that's my question basically, just like everybody's concerns, traffic. And then as far as like lot size and average home size, has anybody provided maps? Or are we not even into that, that round yet as far as how far along this has gone?
All we have on that is preliminary, uh, like, lot play, layout. And, uh, the developer will be submitting development plans in the near future. He will be required to submit his interest plan at the DOT and to Houston County and to us for review. And, uh, he will go from there and he will comply.
This is the state, right, home's not gonna.
Single family home, yes, in Old Park, Mr. Dahl, similar story.
All right. And the only other question I have, um, is since it's gonna be annexed into Centerville, I know surrounding area, uh, more around the last twenty, thirty years of guns, you know, three, triple inside. Um, is that gonna cause us to be annexed down the road, or will we, we have an option? I just don't worry, totally annexing Centerville without my permission, basically, automatically, so.
Well, and the, uh, the city's exist to, to supply sewer, sewer service. And we have a few people out there who own our sewer lines now because their system collapsed. And they want it, it's cheaper to come onto the city sewer than even though you're paying taxes over the long term. But that's generally how you come in. You have to voluntarily request it. It's like this, Mr. Dillon owns this property. He requests to be annexed into the city. We get everybody's, uh, concerned into the thing, we look to see whether it's, it's a good fit for the city. So the same thing would happen with you. If you wanted to come in, we can't arbitrarily annex you. The only time you ever see an arbitrary annexation, annexation is if you become an island. Uh, where you're completely surrounded by a city, then the city has, under the law, can come in and take you. But the state has another law that says you can, an island cannot be created. So that's not a problem anymore. That was a problem ten years ago.
I'd just gotta thank you for your time during COVID. I appreciate letting us speak.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask a question, just Director Brumfeld, real quick here? I just, I've heard several people, uh.
Just, it's a public session, and you, you're public.
Okay, thank you. I, I've heard several people express concerns about the entrances and exits. And, and so correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we were to approve this rezoning tonight, that does not mean that, that this, this, this developer can build whatever he likes. He still has to meet site approvals.
Your approval has nothing to do with, with the development of the, of the project. The development of the project has to go through Houston County, DOT, and our building department to be approved before they can do anything.
So they're still gonna be required to, to, to construct appropriate entrances and exits and lanes and things like that.
And both the entrances. In this case, will not be governed by us. Houston County will be governing the Dunbar entrance, and going to DOT will govern the forty-one entrance.
That's one of the, I think that.
They write the staff and the freedom and, and, and put comments on any, any plans.
I think sometimes we can feel like, when, when you come to a, to an issue like this, that it's whatever, whatever has been seen or whatever's already there is then set in stone. But there's still, after, after, if, if we were to approve this tonight, there's still a, a very long site plan, development approval process with us, with the county, with the state, and so this is, this is not, you know, this is not the, the, a, a final decision of any kind in terms of what the development will look like.
See, but all we're doing is making a decision on whether to annex it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Annexation and, and what rezoning, the zoning.
Mayor, I got a question for Mr..
Yes, sir.
Um, the traffic study, is, is that part of what they agreed to the other night?
Yes, sir. They will be done by Houston County and DOT. And, and Mr. Wingate has already been working with the county and DOT on that, has already submitted the, the plans that he has, the, the layout plans, which they'll do, you know, like, I feel we've done, and talking about, you know, three hundred to six hundred car. They have a formula, they plug in, and they, they figure all of that out. As it were to be acquired, whether that goes to, whether it be this turn lane or what.
Director Brumfeld.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know that Old Stone Crossing is currently in the city.
Yes, sir.
And that this particular possible development, if it comes in the city, it will, of course, be in the city. But tell me this, can we annex US forty-one all the way up to Dunbar Road?
We, we, we already have it down to the, uh, Dunbar extension that turns and goes toward Byron. We already have forty-one all the way through there.
The answer is.
Get this piece right here so we can.
Hey, Mike, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin. Uh, the answer is no, we can't. The reason being, uh, the state allowed us to come in at the point where we end at because to go any further, we'd create an island.
Yeah.
See, we'd create an island because, uh, uh, Houston one road.
That's what I'm true, if this is contiguous with the city right here from where Old Stone Crossing all the way up there.
No, there's, there's a, there's a sliver on, a sliver on the side of the road is not, is still in the county, it's not in the city.
What would be your purpose then next time?
To run radar on it?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna be real with you. If you can't run radar on it, that's, I, I don't have another word for it. That's, that's crap right there. I mean, because I understand what he's saying, and you're basically saying that we can't do anything until they get in the neighborhood. You see what I'm saying? So none of the speeders from Dunbar south to Old Stone Crossing can be pulled over by Centerville Police.
That's right.
On the state patrol, if you're.
I don't like that.
There's a, a section down in there that does, is not in the city of Centerville.
I, I can see it right here on.
Okay? And that section, if we tried to do anything over forty-one, that would create an island. It's against the law to create an island, so the state has kept that section open.
So you're saying, Mayor, in between the development and the road?
Right.
That, yeah, how wide is that section?
It's not very wide, but the state mandated that section in there.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I don't like that.
That was something we worked out when I was city administrator. Larry O'Neil worked it out with the state. That was the only way the state would approve it.
We need to go back to tables.
We're getting a little off track on.
I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, we are getting off track, but we're still in, uh, public meeting, okay? All right, uh, one last chance. Anybody else have any comments on the thing?
Some, some Daniel Harrison from eleven hundred on House Place.
Yes, sir.
One thing we didn't have to note to speak to the other night was the size of the house. Is there, is there any way we can hear the size of the house?
He hasn't provided yesterday. All, all, all the thing we can do, I mean, is acquire lot width and depth and everything like that. He'll have to come up with a house that'll fit on their own, their parcels.
So what I ask you is, if we're truly about families and safety, take a ride through the Old Stone neighborhood. That neighborhood was developed prior to the market crash in two thousand six, two thousand eight, and then set vacant for a long time. And then multiple different developers come in and bought, bought the lots from the bank after the, uh, original developer kinda went under.
Yes, sir.
It is congested, it's unsafe on the roads, and so many cars out on the roads. I can tell you this because me and my wife used it for our exercise there when it was empty, the roads were empty, we could go on our bicycles, jog through there. But now I wouldn't even want to ride over there on my bicycle because it's that dangerous. So I'm thinking about the kids and the families. If this neighborhood, if we're talking about annexing, turns into that neighborhood, you got a mess. You got unsafe streets, you're not gonna let any other sized house in there. It's not gonna be right. We, we need to, we need to set standard on the houses in, in the street. I mean, if we're gonna have a covenant that says no parking in the street, then we need to uphold it, but I don't know that's gonna happen. We are concerned more about safety, if you can hear from the people here, than we are about the annexation. We know progress coming.
Right. You know, according to the developer, the HOA will, will be there.
Well, take, take a ride through Old Stone, just look what happened in that neighborhood.
I'm very familiar with it.
Look what happened in this one.
Yes, sir, I'm very familiar with that. Why, I thought, well, probably all those areas. But they do not have an HOA of any type over there. As you said, you know, it was ten years ago, I guess, the man who owned the thing lost it. The bank took it back, held it for years, and the bank's been selling it off now lots at a time. So that's what's going on over there. But that's beyond what we're doing here tonight. Okay, I'm gonna close the public session, and we open it back into the council meeting. At this point, I entertain a motion to, uh, either annex and rezone it or not, to annex and rezone it.
Mayor, I, I move that we, uh, adopt the ordinance that is provided in your package tonight. Ordinance, uh, number two zero dash two one is what I have it as.
That's correct.
Uh, it is in your, your, your.
That, that just passed, we assign another number to it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
And a second. Does anybody wanna say anything else? Think we've said everything? Okay, uh.
I, you know, I, Mayor, I'll add that, I, 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 I appreciate the, the, the folks coming here and to express their concern. It predominantly being that we're not just against there being more people, we're not against growth, but against it being done well and correctly and, and with safety in mind. And, uh, you know, particularly the, the last gentleman that spoke there, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, we, I have a, a, a staff member who lives in that area, and, uh, he likes it, but it can be a little hairy on the streets over there sometimes. And, uh, I think that we can, uh, it's, it's important to note what, what Director Brumfeld said a minute ago, that, uh, just approval of the rezoning does not mean that the input that we're gonna be looking to give this developer is finished. That, that, um, so, so the things that, that you said there are something that we'll take into account and we're working to make sure that they build something that is, uh, not just to, for the sake of maximizing their profit, but for the sake of providing the best, you know, uh, you know, housing opportunities for folks that live in the city. So I, I, I think we can balance those two things.
I agree, I know.
One thing I'd also say is that, that we do care as a city about safety. Now, that's, I can bet you that. And, uh, and, you know, if, if this goes through as it goes through, uh, it's, it's definitely something that, that we keep an eye on and, uh, and that we're very interested in, in helping the community do. So, uh, Mr. Harrison, I assure you that I will be involved with the community myself as well. See what you're talking about, hear what you have to say. And, uh, and any concerns, I mean, you know how to reach me.
Okay, I, I, I'm like you, uh, Councilman Wright. I appreciate everybody who came here today. You know, like I said, I know you, you, most of you probably don't live in Centerville, but that's all right, you're our neighbors. And we want friendly neighbors. We appreciate y'all's concerns on all these things. It's, uh, you know, it's important to all of us, too. And I'd be very hesitant about a lot of this, if, except for the HOA. And I've seen HOA, how it works over in Eagle Springs, it does a wonderful job over there. I'm very, very pleased with how they do theirs. And if they hear anything like that, uh, I think this, this will probably, uh, they would benefit all of us. I know they're talking about five or six years before this thing's ever completely developed out. So we can watch the mo, the movement as it goes along. And I know, uh, our people and the county and the state will look at how they build everything. The commissioners have told me that they've reviewed some of the homes that, uh, Wingate's have done, and they make beautiful homes, outstanding homes. Uh, homes people can be proud of, and they stick with them, so, you know, I, I was glad to hear that, too. That makes you feel a bit better. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls, same sign? Here or none? Orders passes. Thank you very much. All right. Next item we got on here is item number six. Folks, y'all welcome to stay. If you wanna leave, you can go ahead and leave, but you're welcome to stay.
I don't think we'll be very long on this last one, Mayor.
Right. Discussion, uh, city roll-off dumpster fees. Councilman Wright, you have that one, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is something that was just, I kinda stumbled into in, in the last few weeks here. Um, as part of our, uh, contract with Ryland Sanitation, we require that anybody in the city of Centerville who is using a roll-off dumpster, uh, use Ryland, uh, as their, as their contractor. Uh, you're not allowed to use anybody who, uh, other, other than them. And, uh, there are some good reasons for that. Uh, one being that because we have a contract with Ryland, it allows the city to have some control and some callbacks to Ryland. If they are not disposing of a roll-off appropriately, or if they're taking too long, it allows us to, the, the ability to be able to have a direct relationship with them because they're our vendor, they're our contractor. Uh, but i- in, in certain cases, um, I, I think that, that we, we can maybe do a little bit of better, better job for our citizens. The, the state legislature allows us to, uh, use as a source of revenue, uh, enterprise funds for sanitation or for water. And, uh, for me, the difference is that there are not multiple competing water companies. You, you can really only get that from one place, but there are, uh, multiple competing sanitation companies. And so I, I, I don't like that, uh, you're limited in your ability to sort of, uh, you know, seek a better price somewhere else. And so, uh, what I'm proposing is for us to, uh, adopt a change to the fee schedule that we have with Ryland as it relates to roll-off dumpsters that meet, uh, certain particular conditions. And, uh, those conditions are, uh, if, if, if you are the property owner, if the property in question is your primary residence, and if the work that you're doing does not require a permit. Uh, and the reason for those conditions are, is that, that that would lower the cost of a roll-off dumpster for somebody who wants to move into our city, purchase a home, and improve it. And I think we wanna do everything we can as the mayor and council to incentivize people who wanna move here and improve their properties. Um, the, uh, the reason for those specific constraints are, is if you're a developer and you're building new homes, then we are gonna exercise our right, as we're given by the state, to, to assess some fees there, and that is the cost of doing business. If you're somebody who lives in the city of Centerville and you purchase a second property, either to flip or to use it as a rental house, then that is a money-making endeavor for you. That's the cost of doing business. But in this case, if it is your primary residence, I think we wanna incentivize your ability to, uh, complete projects like this, uh, and, and to be able to do them, you know, uh, in a cost-effective way. Um, the, the, one of the challenges is, is that w- w- we, we have to pay Ryland what we have to pay them. We have a contract with them, and it's a good contract, it's a good document. And so what I, what I'm encouraging us to, to look at tonight is to amend the fee schedule to, uh, essentially reduce the roll-off fees for, uh, you know, again, home properties that meet, jobs that meet those three conditions to, to just essentially cease charging the portion of that, uh, that the city made. And you, you see in your packet here, I've got some numbers for you that we will pull. And I wanna thank, uh, Director Brumfeld and, uh, Ms. Betty in the front office, and, uh, City Kirk Beddingfield, and the, the, our, our girls. And I wanna thank uh, Director Brumfeld and uh, Ms. Betty in the front office, and uh, City Clerk Benningfield, and the the our our girls that work up front, uh, Sherry and Victoria helped me uh, get some of this pulled together so that we can make some sense of it. But what you see here is that in two thousand twenty, uh, we took in a little over a hundred and fifteen, almost a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in total revenue uh, on roll-offs. And if you pull out the jobs where a permit was not required, and the reason for that is if you're pulling a permit, it's a bigger job. You're you're roofing, you're doing something that has to be inspected, and uh, we wanna be able to just maintain a little clarity there. But if you're doing a smaller, if you're cleaning up some a a large amount of yard waste, if you are uh, replacing the carpet in your house, if you're doing something that doesn't require an inspection, uh, I I think we wanna incentivize that. And it averages out in an average year to be in the neighborhood of of six or seven thousand dollars. It depends on how much work takes place, how how heavy the dumpsters are. It varies a bit year to year, but it it averages six to seven thousand dollars. And uh, in the in the scope of of an average for us of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, at least in two thousand twenty, for the city budget, that's a pretty negligible amount. But that amount adds up for a homeowner to be between two hundred and three hundred dollars, depending on what work you're doing. So if you're doing a small home improvement project, uh, for instance, if you were to be repainting your entire house as part of this project, two hundred to three hundred dollars would go a long way towards covering the materials of that project. It would make that project a lot more approachable and a lot more feasible. So uh, I think that uh, this is a significant impact for the 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 homeowners in the city that is a relatively low impact for the city. I know we tap the enterprise fund all the time, and we're constantly chipping away at it in different ways. But I apologize to Director Brumfeld for that, but I think this is one that is worth us considering. Um, I also think that this has the the dual effect of making it a lot more affordable for somebody to clean up their property. I think we can also view this as a way um, to be proactive uh, when it comes to code enforcement. Uh, we we all have those issues where you have a property in your area that winds up being kinda junky, having kind of a mess. And this is a way where I I hope that if it was more affordable, more approachable, if it was easier for somebody, they might deal with that on the front end before we're on the back end, is the city trying to chase them with code enforcement and get uh, those things involved. So uh, what what I'm asking you to do tonight, and I guess, Mayor, if 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 you if you think it's appropriate, I I'll do so in the form of a motion, and then we can have some discussion. But I I would move, since City Attorney Tidings is not here this evening, I would move that we vote to authorize her to uh, draft an amended uh, ordinance for uh, the roll-off size. It's my understanding that we need to make a few uh, modifications to that ordinance anyway. And so uh, and as and as part of that, she would draft an amended fee schedule as well uh, for us to review and uh, potentially adopt at the next council meeting on March the second. So uh, I I make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, have a motion here, a second?
Second.
And a second. Uh, I I like the whole idea of the thing, but I'm not sure how the amended fee schedule's gonna work, uh, to be honest with you, because we have a contract.
Right. Well, and so what we'd be doing is we would be amending the fee schedule. Uh, Ryland would be getting paid the exact same amount of money. Uh, their their funds don't change. The the city is is losing the the portion of the fees that we charge. And again, we're allowed to charge these fees. It's a way for us to generate revenue uh, through the enterprise fund, and we use that that money to do excellent projects all over the city. But this is a relatively small amount that that I think we would be uh, essentially plugging back into some of these neighborhoods that we do wanna see improved. Uh, and the the way I've described it with some of the department heads as I've worked on this is that um, we are allowed to do this. The state says that we can charge this money, but just because we can doesn't always mean that we should. And I think in this case, we're serving our citizens better by by essentially waiving the city's fees, not charging those fees. They're still gonna have to use Ryland. They're not gonna be able to use outside contractors. And they're still gonna, we're still, we're, the city is still gonna pay Ryland exactly what they've been paying. Nothing changes for Ryland. The only change to the fee schedule would be reducing the fee in in an amount to reflect what the city's charge that we we levy on top of that fee from Ryland would be. Does that make sense?
That does make sense.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm just not making that clear.
Right.
I I hate to put you on the spot, but um, what do you think about that?
I think as you said, it's it's a pretty good idea. I mean, it it would go well with with the uh, one of the stuff Ms. Hogan's working on, you know, getting some of these neighbors cleaned, they would just clean the.
Uh, we're not losing a ton of money on that at all.
Yeah, it's minimal. It's minimal. Basically, for lack of a better term to to explain what Mayor's question was. Uh, like I said, Ryland's still gonna get paid. The city just gonna eat that part of the percentage that they wouldn't receive off of it.
I like it.
You think since since they're going to be getting the roll-off from the same company, has no change required to the contract with Centerville?
Nothing will change except for the money that the money the city receives.
Okay, so they'll still come to the city for the, okay.
We, she can prepare that, and we can vote on that in two weeks.
Yeah, I agree.
She actually texted me here to say that we don't need to vote on it. We can just decide that we would, we can direct her to draft that if we we all agree to do that tonight. She's watching uh, online right now. But um, I uh, I I think it's worthwhile. Um, you know, in in addition to this, as part of this process, we have also added some paperwork to the new client account uh, folder for the water department uh, to make it a little more clear. There have been some situations where folks have not been fully aware that that this was required, and it was a little bit of just a kind of a hole in the paperwork. And so it was there, but you kinda had to look for it. And so we're gonna, we're just gonna kinda make that be in bold print, so that it is clear to everybody uh, that this is exactly what we are expecting, that we want you to use our approved vendor, but then for our part, that we're gonna require you to use somebody and not allow you to shop around. We're not gonna profit off of that. Uh, and 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 that, I think, is gonna gonna benefit some folks. Um, so it, Mayor, if you think it's appropriate, if nobody has any objection, I think that we we should, we should direct uh, City Attorney Tidings to draft uh, that, those documents for us and to set them on the agenda for approval at the next meeting.
Okay, you wanna change your motion then?
Uh, I can change my motion. Uh, she says we don't need a vote. Uh, I think we can, if we so choose, I think we can be a little less formal, and we can just, you know, by by agreement here verbally, we can, if if there's no objection, I think we can just direct her to draft those documents without a formal vote.
Okay, so will you withdraw on your motion?
Yes, sir. I'll withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. All right, I I have no problem with that. Does anybody else have any problem with that?
Hang on, I got a text from Becky. She might have a problem. No, she says that'll do. Okay. Even from Colorado, she's keeping this straight.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could uh, if I could add um, one one other part of this discussion. Um, one of the other things that we've tried to do to be proactive with with helping keep the city cleaned up and uh, and things like that is we've uh, we've been, we do a a cleanup day every spring where we provide uh, roll-off dumpsters in a couple of parts of the city uh, at no charge to the public. And also during that time period, you can set just about anything on the curb and uh, and within reason. And uh, and Ryland will come by and pick it up at no cost to the homeowner, and the city eats that expense. It's my understanding that cost averages us between five hundred and a thousand dollars, kind of depending on how much people take advantage of it, how much stuff there actually is. Uh, I, and and just as part of this discussion, as we we move into this upcoming budget season, I I know that comes out of Director Brumfeld's budget, but I think we should consider um, you know, asking him to 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 add some money to that lineup to maybe do a few more of those. Even if we don't uh, go to the fully standard providing the roll-off dumpsters, I don't know that we would need that three or four times a year. But I I think that people, if they had the opportunity to just take some things and set them by the road and know they'd be picked up and they wouldn't be charged extra, I think that would um, go a long way towards helping some of these these code enforcement issues solve themselves and they get cleaned up without us having to uh, to chase them so much on the back end. For the for the cost of that, if you're talking about immediate, if that maxed out and we did it four times a year, if it was four thousand dollars worth of cleaning up our our neighborhoods, that's, I I think that's money well spent. So uh, that's something we can take in, we'll we'll take that into consideration as we go into the the budget year. But I'd love to see us talk about uh, you know, funding some more of those and coordinating with Director Hogan to to get some of those scheduled. Uh, 'cause I think those serve us very, very well.
Yeah, we normally do those in conjunction with recycling center.
Yes, sir.
And uh, they get things there. They also have the Boy Scouts out. The Boys, some of the Boy Scouts earn badges and things during that time period.
Yes, sir.
So. We we'll look at that, the budget's coming up, so we can check the budget and see what what we can do in Kansas.
It's called the garbage amnesty day.
Yeah, garbage amnesty day, yeah.
Yeah, basically what the mouse do, 'cause they'll put all council stuff in there. You have to tell them they can't put their regular garbage in there.
That's all for me, Mr. Mayor. I uh, just wanted to, I mean, if there's any discussion on that, I'm I'm glad to hear it. I just wanted to bring that out to everybody while we're here this evening.
Okay, well, we're down now to the comments from council. Post one, please.
Fire department looks great. You haven't been by there? Probably would do you right to go by there and see it. It's coming right along. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Post two, please.
Mayor, I I just mentioned one thing as it relates to the SPOSS, and I understand that we have no official position on it. But one thing that I think gets uh, lost in the consideration as to whether or not to continue something like that is the fact that because it is collected and it's assessed via a sales tax, um, you should, we should consider the 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 hundreds of thousands of people who do not live in Houston County who come into it every year to do business. And so uh, at a point in fact, you're able to uh, levy some tax money from folks that don't don't live here, that's a uh, that's a tremendous advantage. So that's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Very true. Post three, please.
Oh, yes, service man. I I just wanna say, I know it's cold outside right now, so everybody wants to stay inside, but we have had some warm days. So if you get an opportunity on one of those warm days, go out and spend some time at the park.
Mm-hmm.
Every time I've been out there, it's been a a lot of kids running around on the playground, people walking around on the trails to get exercise. It's there for our entire community to use. Uh, we are proud of that, and we are excited to see that things along well.
Even the Dunbar community.
That's right. 'Cause remember, SPOSS paid for a good part of that.
That's right.
And we all paid that SPOSS.
Yeah.
So that's why we invite all our neighbors around here. We invite people from Peach County too. 'Cause they come over here and spend money. It helps fund our SPOSS. We appreciate them.
It's not just the park, it's the destination.
It's the destination, that's right. Okay, post four, please.
Okay, um, I'd like to especially thank our law enforcement, police department. Uh, the recent response to uh, code enforcement complaints. And and I'll tell you, you talk about some professionals, they go out there, look at the situation, uh, and take care of it. And so, you know, first responders on the spot all the time take care of everything to include uh, to include even code enforcement complaints and those types of issues. Also wanna say thank you to Centerville Police, uh, Centerville Fire Department. Uh, the neighbor of mine recently suffered a serious stroke, and this, the fire department was there and saved his life. And he's 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 recovering now, and he's doing really good. And uh, and those are the kinds of things that matter to us as neighbors and as friends. When when we see those kinds of uh, that kind of responses and that kind of support from the city. Uh, City Clerk Benningfield recently identified a fashion open records request. And I'll tell you, you know, detail, detail, detail. You just cannot get enough people to really care and to look into their job and to do the right things. And uh, Ms. Benningfield, I wanna personally thank you for not just doing your job, but going, doing really exceptional at identifying stuff and these kinds of things that are around every day, that we see every day around us. I'd like to thank those uh, the folks who came out to talk about their concerns about the rezoning. I think too often, we don't get enough community involvement out here sometimes to come out and say what you have to say, speak what you have to speak. And trust me, we care. And and we will, uh, you know, if we say we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it. And so uh, you're not out there on your own. Uh, you know, it's just not that way. So uh, just wanted to let you know that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. You know, put that rezoning thing out there. We, what we normally, we post the signs out there, like you say, but we're also advertising the newspaper. And I know a lot of people don't get the newspapers anymore, but, you know, we're not sure how else to do it. We we don't try to hide it. Everything is out there in the public. We want everybody to come and do it. Again, I I personally express my appreciation for all of our people who came out here and spoke tonight. Y'all had some extremely valid points. Thank y'all very much for it. Okay, council's over. Thank you so much.